Hi.
I can hear, I can hear you answer the phone. So we're trying to figure out why you can't hear us. We can hear you, but you can't hear us through the Zoom.
Interesting. Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. And the participants on the call can all, we can talk to each other.
Yeah, so we may go ahead and we're trying to figure out what's going on, but if the captain and the chief can hear us, we might go ahead and have them give their presentations and then come back to you while we figure out what's going on.
Absolutely.
I'll text you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right.
Okay, so Captain, Captain Newsom, can you hear us and can you respond?
I can hear you. Sorry, I can hear you on my cellphone, but not on my computer for some reason.
Okay, well, sorry. Let's go ahead and please, and we'll have your, your presentation and we'll take what we can get at this point.
Okay, very good. Good evening, everyone. Mayor Miles, City Council, city staff. So, so about the technological glitch. So tonight I'll present the March 2021 Sheriff's Department Activity Report. For March, we responded to 312 calls for service. Of those 312 calls, we had the below or the following noteworthy incidents. One petty theft report at the 700 block of Santiago Boulevard. Miscellaneous property was taken for approximately $50. We had two vandalism reports, one at the 1900 block of Mesa Drive. Damage to a neighbor's fence. This is appears to be some type of property dispute. And then on the 26th, at the 10,000 block of Center Drive, the residence was egged. And then on March 5th, we had an assault and vandalism on Martinique, 1800 block of Martinique. Minor injury, and this was a family dispute of sorts. And then on the 12th, we did have a report of an attempted robbery. This was a late report. The victim called a couple days afterwards. A minor victim at 700 block Santiago Boulevard. They were riding their bike and a subject pulled a knife of some sort, box cutter type knife, and asked them to give over their bicycle. And that's ongoing investigation at the moment. No real suspect info on that. We issued 14 traffic citations, five parking citations, and we had no reported traffic collisions. That was our activity for the month. And if I can, I wanted to just talk a little bit about fentanyl. And primarily just the massive increase in fentanyl that we're seeing. It's a significant threat to safety and oftentimes these fentanyl is found in pills and what other types of drugs where it's used as a cutting agent. And can be very poisonous. The last four years, our narcotics teams have seized 388 pounds of fentanyl, which is 88 million lethal doses. And as little as two grains of fentanyl, the size of a salt, salt grains can result in death. And we want to make sure that folks are, especially parents, are talking to their kids about drug use, reminding them to avoid all types of drugs. Especially this day and age where the illegal drug manufacturers are supplementing the, what they believe is the known drugs with fentanyl, which is incredibly fatal. So we want to make sure folks are aware of that and advising their young children especially to avoid any type of drug use. That's all I have for my report at the moment. Any questions?
Counsel, does anybody have any questions?
What do you attribute the increase in the fentanyl availability to?
Turn your mic on.
What do you attribute the increase in the fentanyl supply to?
I don't know that we've determined what you're attributed to other than kind of anecdotally. It is probably readily available to use as a cutting agent. So they use it to cut other types of drugs. Because it is so powerful, it takes a small amount of it. It's manufactured in these illegal laboratories and it can be made rather cheaply. So that's why they utilize it to put in other types of street drugs.
Anyone else? Hey, Captain Newsom, thank you so much for your report and of course for your service. And yeah, we appreciate everything that you and your deputies do. Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Now we'd like to move to Chief Hunter for the Orange County Fire Authority. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Counsel. Since the last city council meeting on March 23rd, we were dispatched to 45 incidents in the city of Villa Park of significance. One was a structure fire. It amounted to be a smoke investigation inside the structure. We had a ornamental tree slash vegetation fire, which was a small bush that was quickly extinguished. I wanted to review some information regarding drowning statistics, stats, as well as the ABCs of drowning. As temperatures rise around Southern California with summertime steadily approaching, OCFA would like to remind everybody to practice pool and water safety. Some of the stats here in the county in 2020, Orange County had 95 drowning incidents. Of those 95 incidents, 34 were fatal. In 2020, in the city of Villa Park, there was one drowning incident and it was non-fatal. The information I'd like to provide as far as the pool safety, it's the ABCs of water safety. A is for active adult supervision, making sure the non-swimmers are in arms reach of an adult to quickly pull them out of the pool if they do get into stress. Wearing Coast Guard approved life vest. B is for barriers, making sure there are critical barriers in backyards around pools. If you have multiple barriers, it actually provides more time if there is a lapse in supervision. And C is for classes, learning to swim as well as learning CPR will help make a difference. Just over the weekend in the city of Villa Park, we had a drowning response and it sounds like it's going to result in a positive outcome. There's more information that we have for the citizens on ocfa.org for pool and water safety. That's all I have. End of report. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions, comments? Chief Hunter, we'd like to say thank you for your service and our prayers go out to the family of the individual you referenced and, and to your firemen that had to be the first responders on that call and blessings to them as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Have a good night. Okay.
You too.
We're gonna try and, and see if Cynthia can, can hear us and respond now for a presentation on the songs from Southern California Edison, I hope.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Hi Cynthia.
Hi, hi. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I really appreciate you having us here this evening. And again, my name is Cynthia Quimby and I am your relatively new government relations manager for Southern California Edison. I'm very excited to be in this new role and to get to work with all of you. I hope that at the next meeting, I'll get to be there with you in person. And I just wanted to let you know that we at Edison remain committed to continuing our strong partnership with the city of Villa Park. And we appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening to provide you with an update on the spent fuel storage at the Santa No Free nuclear generating station or what we call Songs. Since the retirement of Songs in 2013, we have shared our commitment to safely decommission the plant. To do this successfully and to restore the land, it sits onto the landowner, which is the US Navy. We need to relocate the spent nuclear fuel to an off-site facility. However, such a facility does not exist despite the legal obligation of the federal government to establish one. We brought in some of the nation's top experts and after two years of analysis, Southern California Edison shared last month a strategic plan to support the off-site relocation of the spent fuel that's currently stored at Songs. So this evening, I'm pleased to introduce you to my colleague, James Peterson. He's a senior advisor on our policy engagement team and he's a subject matter expert on our Songs decommissioning efforts. And he's going to provide you with a presentation update and answer any questions that you may have. So with that, James, I'll kick it over to you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Hi, good evening.
Okay, good evening. Well, thank you Cynthia and thank you Mayor Miles and council members for allowing us this opportunity to come and speak to you about what's been happening at Songs. We have a slide deck and wanted to see, is that being projected now?
Yes, we, yep, I believe.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna go off video so you can focus on that slide deck, but we'll come back on to answer any questions you might have. So first off, we've been working very hard lately on a couple of things and I want to focus on those tonight. The first of which is the Song strategic plan. As Cynthia mentioned, we have a team of experts that have been working with us. These are national and international experts on decommissioning plants and what to do with the spent fuel. And then also I'd like to mention what we've been doing in terms of building our advocacy efforts with the Action for Spent Fuel Solutions Now Coalition. Next slide, please. So very briefly, I wanted to mention that we have some core principles and how we're decommissioning Songs and that's focusing on safety, stewardship and engagement. Safety first and foremost is always how Edison does its work. Stewardship refers to how we plan to restore the site and hand it back to the Navy in as good a condition as we got it back in the 1960s. And then in terms of engagement, we have a community engagement panel that meets on a quarterly basis where we have the opportunity to have public meetings, invite all questions, try and answer all those questions. But also we have site tours, which we just recently began offering again and through our website, songscommunity.com. That is an opportunity for people on a regular basis to learn more about what's happening at the plant in between those community engagement panel meetings. Next slide, please. A very brief history of the plant. We began construction back in the 1960s on Unit 1. We then later had Units 2 and 3, which went online. Eventually, Unit 1 was dismantled and the two units that remain are the two domes that you see as you drive down I-5. When we dismantled Unit 1, that became the site where we now store some of our spent fuel. Next slide. This is an overhead and in the background, you can see Camp Pendleton and Interstate 5 and our plant on the left. That's what we consider our, the west side of the plant and that's where our storage facilities are. And then the Units 2 and 3 are what the domes that you see there. Next slide. And I'm hoping the technology works for this. We have a very brief two-minute video that shows the dismantling of the plant that'll take place over roughly the next eight years.
Once dismantlement of Santa No Free nuclear plant begins, safety and environmental stewardship will guide the process every step of the way. Southern California Edison selected the team of AECOM and Energy Solutions for this project, one of the largest commercial nuclear plant decommissioning projects in the world. This animation illustrates a conceptual technical approach, which will be refined during the detailed planning process. The initial demolition will focus on clearing areas of the property to facilitate staging and seamless loading and removal of debris. This demolition on the north side will also clear space for a rail spur to allow for transportation of debris, such as concrete and rebar. Next, the team will create a path down to the intake area by removing the turbine buildings, creating access to the west side of the property. After this work is complete, the buildings between the containment domes will be demolished. Temporary structures will be used during demolition to control dust and other debris. Areas within the safety, fuel and nearby buildings will be demolished internally. In the final stage, the containment buildings will be demolished using a bottom-up technique that has proven effective in prior nuclear plant decommissioning projects. Soil materials will be used to create a level surface, the final step in fully restoring the site for unrestricted use. Santa No Free's used nuclear fuel, which is regulated as high-level radioactive waste, will remain on site in a robust steel and concrete storage facility until the federal government provides an off-site facility as required. The Santa No Free decommissioning team is committed to environmental stewardship and remaining engaged with the community throughout the decommissioning project.
Okay, thank you for allowing us to show you that. And hopefully, wishfully, it would be that quick for us to actually do all that work. So on the next slide here. Yeah, I think we're, we're still seeing the video portion. Okay, we can go from there. Thank you. So after we, after we complete the demolition and removal of all the material there, that's essentially what you would see from the coastline. That's our, that's our goal. Next slide. Here you have a timeline for each of the different activities and in between those dotted red lines, you see the work that we've, that we've begun. All of the spent fuel has been removed from those two domes and they're in an area in which we call the ISFISV. It's where all the spent fuel is stored in 123 canisters. That was accomplished in August of 2019. And it's sitting there waiting to be moved, which is what we're going to be talking about in our strategic plan. And this just gives you a broad timeline of how long it's going to take to get that spent fuel moved offsite. Next slide. This is an example of exactly what that spent fuel looks like. It's not liquid form. It's not something that like you would see on The Simpsons, some kind of green ooze. It's solid forms and it's stored in, in the structures on the right-hand side called a fuel assembly. And then next slide. That's where the fuel assemblies are stored in these, in these canisters and that's what we have 123 of that are done, ready to be shipped at the site. Next slide. This shows you what the ISFISV looks like, that area to the west of the plant where we have these 123 canisters stored. That's encased in concrete and very safely stored there. Next slide. This is an overhead of the ISFISV. We, we have on the northern piece, the REVA system, which was built to accommodate the spent fuel from Unit 1. And then the more recent development is the whole tech system on the bottom end. That's where the canisters are stored upright in the, in those systems. Next slide. These are very safe systems. In fact, you can see one of my colleagues sitting here on top of one of the 35, 35,000 pound lids. And those lids sit above, six feet above the canisters that I showed you in the previous slide. And they're very safe. It's not even necessary to wear protective clothing to do those. So this slide shows you what is ready to ship and that column, that first column that says now, you can see that there's 100 of those canisters that are ready to go today if we only had a federal site to move them to. Next slide. This is the problem is that Congress had, has a responsibility for, well, Congress directed the Department of Energy to dispose of the spent fuel at Yucca Mountain in legislation back in 1982. Unfortunately, over the years, there hasn't been progress in getting Yucca Mountain developed. Utilities and their customers paid $41 billion to dispose of this, including about a billion dollars from Edison and Songs customers. Because of the failure of the federal government to take possession of this fuel in 1990, 1998, as it was required to, we continue to have a problem with moving that spent fuel according to the existing statute. In 2010, essentially the Yucca Mountain proposal was, was abandoned. And we now have a number of sites all across the country that don't have a place to spend this fuel despite investing essentially 50 years worth of planning for it. Next slide. Here you can see this problem nationally. You have the Song site in purple there on the, the Southern California coast, but we have other sites in California, including up in San Luis Obispo County. There is scheduled to be the PG&E plant, Mount Diablo, closed in 2025. And the same situation exists at plants all across the country. And in the next, next few years, we expect the number of closed plants to double, which makes this problem even worse. Next slide, please. So as Cynthia mentioned, we have had this team of experts working on coming up with a solution. How do we move this spent fuel off of, off of Santa No Free? And what we came up with after two years of work is that really we have certain things that have to happen at the federal level, which is number one, restarting the federal nuclear waste program that was abandoned in 2010. We need to pursue interim storage places that look very similar to what we have at Songs on the coast, but in a more ideal setting, potentially in New Mexico and Texas. Those are possibilities. But we also need to keep working on a permanent geological repository, essentially Yucca Mountain Part 2. What is the appropriate final, final place for all this spent fuel? Next slide. We're very sensitive to some of the concerns that, that our customers might have. If we don't find a solution for this, there could be some exposure to our customers to some of the costs. some of the costs to maintain that spent fuel on our coast. We also want to make sure that the Navy gets the land back that it leased to us at Congressional Direction back in the 1960s so that they can have that for training, which is their primary purpose. Next slide. These are some of the options that we looked at of federally-sponsored storage. We looked at non-federal storage sites. Some of those places that are being looked at now are just simply private companies that have made proposals. We've looked at moving it elsewhere on Camp Pendleton. That's really not an option for them. But whether the things were promising or not, our strategic plan looked at every, every possibility left, no stone unturned. Next slide. So our priorities in terms of what we need to have happen is, number one, we have to have funding from Congress to pay for the Department of Energy or some new entity to begin the planning effort. If it's not Yucca, where? But you have to have a program to figure out where. We think it's very important for there to be an interim solution so that we don't have to wait another 30, 40 years for Yucca Part Two. We can look at something on the interim, which would allow the spent fuel to move off the Santa Nofre much quicker. Next slide. So to do that, we have a coalition that we formed. It's called the Action for Spent Fuel Solutions Now Coalition. And some late-breaking news today, the Orange County Border Supervisors approved a resolution to join the coalition. Previously, we had Supervisor Bartlett serve as a co-chair, but now she has all her colleagues behind her. We're also working with Supervisor Jim Desmond in San Diego County, who's the other co-chair, along with the other entities that are the owners of Songs, which is not just ourselves, but San Diego Gas and Electric and the City of Riverside. Next slide. Here's a very brief summary of some of the members that have joined us. In Orange County, we have quite a few of especially business organizations, local elected officials. We're really proud to have Don Barnes on board, as well as the Orange County Fire Authority. Next slide. This is a brief snapshot of our website, where you can go and sign up to learn more about the coalition and also to become a supporting member, which we, we hope that at some point, we can have a conversation with the council about the city of Villa Park becoming a member itself. Next slide. These are ways to stay informed about what's happening at Songs. We have that, that quarterly meeting of the community engagement panel, and then also just regular updates through our Songs community website. Next slide. And just a final slide here on what the, more about the community engagement efforts through the community engagement panel. So I'll stop there because I'm sure you probably have questions, and I'd like to reserve time for that.
Thank you. So one of the things, one of the reasons why we requested you come and give this presentation this evening is twofold. One, I know I received probably close to 100 or 150 emails from some advocacy groups, so I was wanting some comment as to the expectation of that, along with my fellow council member had some questions as it pertained to OCFA. And so I'll go ahead and let Councilman Rossini ask his question first.
Thank you for your presentation and your comments. Obviously, looking forward to hopefully getting the project underway. Nobody wants that type of material in our backyard, but obviously, it has to be done so with the utmost safety, and the destination has to be vetted thoroughly. What is the chief complaint of the group that we are hearing so vocally from, from your standpoint? We're hearing all sorts of different things in their emails, but I'd like to hear your point of view.
Sure. So there are a couple of groups that have been opposed to all of our work to decommission the plant ever since we made that announcement back in 2013. And we have engaged them at all of our community engagement panel meetings. We've had one-on-one meetings with them. The conversation that you're just now hearing has been going on for about the past eight years, and we have asked, we've answered all of their questions, but they're just not satisfied with the answers. For example, one of the things that they've suggested is that, that we look for, we look to implement a new system of canisters. They would like to have a different, thicker system. But as you saw on one of the slides, we do use the, the best-in-the-industry standard. We have a thick canister that's five inch, five eighth inches thick. They would like to see better, but we're already at the top of the, the industry in terms of thick canisters. Only about 8% of the rest of the US uses these, this level. Most use the smaller, thin canisters. So we've, we've addressed that. They've suggested that it be moved elsewhere on the site, but Camp Pendleton, we have a very constrained area where we can put this, and we can't really look at other options for where else to put it on the site until we demolish the rest of the plant. And we have a commitment to the California Coastal Commission to reexamine the location of our ISFISV in 2035. If the spent fuel is still there, we'll look at some of those areas that we've cleared for the possible relocation further away from the coast. As far as moving it inland onto Camp Pendleton, deeper into Camp Pendleton, we've heard from the Department of the Navy that they absolutely will not accept that. You know, there's some other issues that, that have been raised by our detractors, and we've, we've answered them to the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, the State Lands Commission, to the California Coast Commission. We're heavily regulated, and their own staffs have come back and said some of the information from our detractors is just simply not true. So we're happy to continue having that conversation with them and with you, but they're, they have not made credible claims. We've answered them time and time again.
As a member of the Orange County Fire Authority and as the board, board member or a council member assigned to the board, how much staff time of OCFA is going to be tasked or used with this coalition? That's one of the concerns we've all had as a member of the board.
Right. I was able to listen in on that meeting. Unfortunately, we didn't have a chance to present at the meeting. There won't be any staff time used, and I think that got a little bit confusing in the OCFA conversation. What will happen is by being a supporting member, because we have different classes of members, we have the kind of the leadership group that Edison and the counties are involved in, but we have a supporting member, which is essentially raising your hand, saying that we support this mission, and that's the end of your commitment. If an agency or an individual wants to be more involved, they certainly can be, but that's certainly not the expectation of most organizations and specifically not of OCFA.
Last question. One of the allegations, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm paraphrasing, feel free anybody, was that this spent material was going to be stored in depressed communities of color, potentially, there was racial overtones, there were ethnic overtones in, in some of the emails. Has, have those concerns been looked into and vetted? I'm not aware of any plans or any facility besides the Yucca Mountain facility in Nevada that are on the books. Can you answer those questions?
Sure, that's correct. And this is one of the really unfortunate claims of our detractors. First off, there, there is not a site that's been selected, and you saw in my, my slides, we have a variety of different options that we're, we're looking at. None of those options, the really our strategies are site-specific. Edison, neither Edison nor the coalition has named a specific site where it would like to see the, the spent fuel go. What we've done in our strategic plan is lay out a process for consent-based citing. This is really important because in order for this to work and not repeat the mistakes of, of the Yucca Mountain selection site, you have to have support from the local communities, and that means very local at the county level. It's also certainly going to mean support from the governor of, of states, and this approach has, has worked in other countries. For example, Finland is just about to begin using its own consent-based permanent repository site. Canada's looking to do the same. They now have a list of finalist sites where you have local communities saying that they want, they want that facility, they see some benefits in terms of jobs and economic benefits. We're looking at those kinds of models, and most importantly, that's not only what Edison is saying as a company, but you just have the administration take that same position. The new Department of Energy Secretary, former Governor Granholm, has said very strongly that consent-based citing is the way to go, and that that's what the administration's position's going to be. So no, it's simply not going to work if, if a site was foisted upon a community that didn't want it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Pitts?
Mayor, thank you. Jim, could you answer a couple of questions for me? First is, what's the specific ask of Villa Park? And number two, what's the impact to our residents so they can better understand what they should be thinking about or considering as this process takes place?
Well, we're not formally making any ask of you tonight. We just wanted to provide you with the briefing, but we're welcoming all cities that would like to become supporting members. And again, supporting members is simply saying, I support the mission of the coalition to find a off-site location for this spent fuel and support the advocacy efforts of the coalition to do that. That'd be wonderful if, if the city could adopt a resolution like that modeled after the county. And in terms of why city residents should, should be interested in this, is this is really a national problem that has been long overdue in terms of finding a solution. If we don't find a solution for, for this, that means that we're going to have spent fuel on-site at Santa Nofre indefinitely. That was never the plan for us as a community, as a county, or for us as a nation. There was always the intent when nuclear plants were developed to find a permanent repository for them that would be, you know, an appropriate place away from where the generation actually took place. You know, and also, a very significant concern for us is if, if a liability is continued to be incurred because the federal government fails to take responsibility for the, for the spent fuel, in which they already have the funding for the ultimate, you know, location for that, that's going to be a burden potentially on our customers, and we really have a strong interest in representing them and making sure that this doesn't fall back to customers. They've already paid.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, well, Cynthia and Mr. Peterson, thank you so much for the presentation and also for, so your, your answers were very thorough and direct. I appreciate that, and I know our council members do. I believe that you answered some of the questions which provoked me to ask you for the presence of your presentation. So with that, I'd like to bid you a good night, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night. All right, moving on. So I had some proclamations that I wanted to announce, but I think in, in light of the, the time, I'm going to go ahead and put those towards the end of the meeting, and we're going to go forward with the rest of the agenda, and we are at the part of public comments. So before we start on that, at this time, I'm just going to lick my fingers to move my page, but I can't do that. At this time, we will review comments from members of the public to address any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. We will also be reviewing public comments on each agenda item. So at this time, if you have any public comment, which I know you all do, this will be the time to make that public comment. You'll be recognized by our city manager, and as indicated before, everyone will have a maximum of three minutes. You don't have to utilize the whole entire three minutes, but you are welcome to use up to three minutes. So with that, Mr. City Attorney, do you have any comments?
Sure. So because the housing element issue is not on the agenda, the council isn't taking any action tonight, so there is not going to be a full board discussion as to your proposals, commentary, and the like. They can ask you questions and make brief comments, but they can't take any action or have any in-depth analysis. So if you're expecting any broad back and forth on the issues under the law, we cannot do that. The housing element will be agendized for discussion on multiple more times, where there can be more of that. So with that, Steve, if you want to start them up?
Thank you. I've received, I have a number of things. We'll just read them in the order and, okay, Jose Dalprat?
Hey there, I'm Jose Dalprat, calling from El Paso. I just wanted to come and express my opposition to the Wanda Road rezoning. I've watched other city council meetings, and I've mentioned, and I noticed that nobody had any comments, and you guys mentioned there was no community comments, so we're here to comment and say we don't want it. You know, there's other options, and I think the mayor, you already made a comment about supporting not doing this on the road, and I hope all of you will come to that same conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Our next, okay. Our next speaker is Mary Ann Copeland.
I happen to be Jose's next-door neighbor and got he and his wife on this bandwagon. I've been in Villa Park for 20 years, been in the presidential tract, the 15 before that, so I'm well acquainted with the area. I completely understand that the demand or the request makes sense, but we have plenty of other options before getting into a neighborhood's personal space and infringing on our areas. I wrote to each of you. I heard back from Councilwoman Colacott and Mayor Miles. I just think we have enough other options that we just can take this one off the board. It's not good for traffic. There's a school right there. It's not good for crime. It's not good for our housing values. There's just nothing good about it, considering everything else that we have. So I'm advocating with Mr. Kuli and the rest of the group to do what I can to see that this doesn't happen. I have a question, if I can. You mentioned there were other dates, plenty of other opportunities. Is it there just one?
Right now, at this point, there'll be May 11th.
Right.
Subsequent, we'll be submitting a plan to HCD the state, and 60 days later, so June we'll be submitting something to the state, hopefully. They'll give us a response 60 days later, and then the city council has to take action to formally adopt the plan sometime before the end of September, early October. So there'll be at least two more opportunities. That date will be dependent upon when HCD gets back to us this summer. So late summer, I would expect the council would have to reconvene and have an opportunity to address the issues raised by the state on our submittal that goes in June.
What our goal obviously is, is to not even have that be a topic for conversation so we don't need to come back and do this again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, I have a question for you. Yes, ma'am. Councilman Rossini here. I share your concerns, first of all. Let me just go ahead and put that out there.
Thank you.
You mentioned other options. What are other options? Because part of the feedback process that's so important for this, and keep in mind that we're being forced to do this.
I understand.
So when you vote in 2022 and 2024, remember who you're voting for, and what we're being forced to do here in California, here in Orange County, here in Villa Park, and who's forcing us to do it, what are the other options that you would think be more appropriate? And again, I share your concerns.
It's what was laid out in the nice packet of information I received in the mail today, and as Steve Franks explained to us in our Rotary Meeting on Thursday, there's east of Villa Park Road, I believe that's, I'm not good directionally, but up at Villa Park Road, the gravel pit, there's the town center here, there's the Tropical Plaza Nursery. I don't think adding more than one ADU to a residence makes any sense whatsoever. To me, if they have it, it's because they want it for a personal reason, not to put low-income housing in there. Anything that gets right into our neighborhoods needs to be avoided at all costs.
Thank you.
I love our town center. It plays an important role in the city, but it's one of the best options that we have compared to everything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is, and I'm not going to, is this, Sabar Ismail? Sabar Ismail?
I'll go call him up.
Okay, Michael Houlihan?
And would you please say your full name and spell the last name?
We have that for the record. They filled out the forms.
I like it.
We can provide those after.
Okay.
It'll speed things up.
Good evening. I'm Mike Houlihan, H-O-U-L-I-H-A-N. Good evening, mayor and council. My wife and I have been residents of Villa Park for over 24 years. I did submit a letter to each one of the council and to Steve Franks last night. I understand that the city has a, a difficult task of determining how to meet those housing needs that are being allocated from the state down. I listened to this discussion on your April 13 meeting. Each of the options that were contemplated, and many of the discussions were productive. There appeared to be a consensus that the options with the least direct impacts to the least number of residents should be pursued because they may be viable and actionable, which appears to be the city's objective here. I'll be discussing an option that needs to be removed, but also discussing the options that would have fewer impacts to fewer residents, city residents. The one option that should be removed is, which is identified as the rezone Wanda between Abra- between Aberdeen and Collins, but it's actually Lincoln and Collins. Um, the project includes removing Fitch and Ranch, uh, road, removing the linear open space, removing the existing wall and fence, extending five streets to Wanda, uh, road. Um, there are a lot of issues with regard to that, uh, option. It would eliminate the current connectivity of our existing Villa Park neighborhood, uh, that is south of Villa Park Road. Uh, it would eliminate the five-foot, um, sidewalk that is used by, as a safe route to schools, by, uh, many of the residents off of Fitch and Ranch Road. Uh, it would remove the existing fence that separates Wanda from Fitch and Ranch Road, which was only, uh, closed in, uh, within the past, uh, decade. And, um, and the reason why it was closed in, because we were having issues with both, uh, home invasions and, and graffiti, um, which has now basically disappeared, and by removing it, it would open it up. Uh, another issue is the Kinder Morgan Petroleum Pipeline, uh, and it's located on Wanda Road right away along the sidewalk in the grass area. And land use planning and pipeline requirements require a setback, uh, to reduce potential safety issues. Uh, this option, uh, is to rezone a portion of Wanda Road right away.
Sir, I'm sorry, it's three minutes. Could you please conclude?
Yes. Sorry, I didn't get to my options.
I'll give you about 15 seconds, but I just wanna be fair to everybody.
Okay. The, the, um, so anyway, we, we respectfully request the city council remove that option, and the other potential options that, uh, agree with is the gravel pit on Villa Park Road. Yes, there are a number of hurdles related to that, but it would result in a lot less direct impacts to existing neighborhoods. And then the mixed use in the town center, which is an option that is widely used by many of the, uh, adjoining jurisdictions, uh, to accommodate the affordable housing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Susan Miller.
Hi, my name is Susan Miller. My last name is M.I.L.L.E.R. I am a resident here in the city of Orange at the, um, at the, uh, presidential tract homes. So I'm right there bordering near the Wanda Road, so I'm here to just be supportive for my neighbors and to, yes, I agree to have that, I think it's better to have it not disturbing our neighborhood. I run a business in my neighborhood, I'm a family childcare provider, so having less traffic there would be better for me and, I think, for my clients, and, um, and I just think it's a better area to have away from the neighborhood, so I'm just here to support everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Your next speaker is Elliot Brenner, Dr. Brenner.
Hi, my name is Dr. Elliot Brenner, B.R.E.N.D.E.R. Uh, I live on Albany Circle. I live, uh, along where Fitch and Ranch Road is. I am completely against the extension of the Fitch and Ranch Road, uh, to Wanda for those units, and I think there are significant other places that you can make units. I have a list here. Tropical Plaza, rezone the entire town center for mixed use, um, use the surplus property of the four schools, um, use the watered property that the water district is hoarding, uh, allow more than two granny units. I don't think the granny units, they're gonna accept, but I think a lot of these others are very easy to do. I think there's a hell of a lot of land that's unincorporated. Anex some land, make Villa Park bigger, move them over there. And, excuse me, you go along the 91, and unfortunately, it's not Villa Park, but there's tons of land. You can build a whole new city there. So, you know, why no to the Fitch and Ranch Road, aside from the fact that I live there? One, you're talking about low-income housing apartments, it's gonna be an eyesore, it's not gonna fit into the community. Where the hell are these people gonna park? There isn't any parking there as it is. That land was designated as a park space. When the railroad was pulled up, it was made a park, and that's where everybody walks their dogs. And excuse me, where are they gonna walk their dogs? We're gonna have dog shit all over the place. So, you know, excuse me, it's a bad idea, find another location, and tell the governor where we can shove it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kristi Chapman.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Kristi Chapman, C.H.A.P.M.A.N. I hate public speaking with everybody in my body. Um, my husband and I have been here for 13 years, our son has gone to Villa Park Elementary, our daughter's still there, Saravilla, Villa Park High School. My kids are such outdoor kids, from playing Little League to riding their skateboards, their bicycles. We are up and down Fitch and Ranch, walking our dogs, scooters. I taught both of my kids how to ride bikes up and down that road. All the new families that come in, I mean, that is like the last open area we have here in Villa Park. And I hate to say it, but we're the slums of Villa Park, you know, we all say it. And, and the thought of encroaching on this space and taking away the security of that frontage road that blocks Wanda from us, the safety, walk, I walk my daughter to school every single morning, and the thought of having cars zooming through there with no more protective road scares me. And, and I feel like there are so many other opportunities that the city can do. Uh, I, I mean, the, the school district is huge, those are huge areas, this area is huge, and these neighbors already experienced commercial development, why not have a little bit more? This is the last thing we have of open space. It's just, it really bothers my husband and I that this is the house that we built to have for the rest of our life, and now the property value's gonna go down to nothing. I mean, that is a frightening prospect when my husband's close to retirement. So I, I just, I really wish that you guys could just think of another alternative that maybe is a little bit more research, just to help out everyone in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, I'm gonna mispronounce this, Nagy Abraham?
Oh, Nagy, though.
Okay. Okay, Rafi Sharif? Yolanda, Yolanda Jordan?
She's there.
Anne Asmus?
I'm here.
Okay.
Is it okay to speak without this, or we leave it on?
Uh, that would be a, a question for the city manager.
We take it off to speak? No?
Go ahead. Go ahead. Take it off. Go ahead, if you can, if you're having trouble speaking, go ahead, take it off.
Thank you. Well, thank you for hearing us today. We're all residents, most of us, of Villa Park since 1976. We've owned our home on Port's Mouth Circle. After my mother died, my father died first, then my mother, we moved here eight months ago, and we love this area. We love Fitch and Ranch. Every day I'm walking my dog down there, saying hello to neighbors, and we are, I believe, five cul-de-sacs along Fitch and Ranch Road. Now, I know all you council members probably live, you have to live in Villa Park, right, to, to serve here? Can you imagine if you were on those five cul-de-sacs, and it was pronounced, okay, we're gonna put a triplex at the end? You know, there's two corner houses of each cul-de-sac, right? We're gonna put a triplex on each one of those, take out that wall onto Wanda with all that traffic. This is just a big, big no for those of us who live there. And, um, that's what we wanna say, you gotta find another place. This is our forever home, like the lady said, to retire. I'm 57 years old, I wanna enjoy, you know, the, my time, walk my dog, I love Villa Park. I, uh, 1969, I was enrolled at Villa Park Elementary, went all my school time, lived in South Orange County. I've seen what low-income can do. I lived in Laguna Hills, in the hills of Nellie Gill Ranch, very affluent area. We had, down the hill, we had some low-income housings, housing put in off Alicia Parkway, and needless to say, all those big tons of units next to Laguna Hills High School, it was a riffraff mess. We had shootings over there, we had cops there consistently, there was drug activity. I used to take my church to feed some of the kids that were, you know, lower economic, we'd bring bagels and play with the kids, but that brought an element that I wouldn't want tact along Fitch and Ranch and our beautiful homes. Again, we love Villa Park, we wanna keep it the same way as much as possible. If you can take this OUSD off Catella over there, I voted there, not, in November, right, in the presidential election, isn't that area up for, you know, a place to put it? So consider that, and just know that we love Villa Park, and I know you guys do too, serving on the board, but just imagine if this was your house here, and you will know, and it would break your heart to see what it would do. So thank you very much.
Anne, thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Betty Campbell.
Betty left, that's my neighbor.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Our next speaker is Tui Nguyen and Duke Palm?
Yeah. Hi, my name is Tui Nguyen, and I'm a resident on Tacoma Circle, and my husband is here, he's right there, and, you know, I, I share the views, I'm, I'm gonna make it short. Um, I just wanna be present to, um, support my neighbors, and just to make sure, you know, we've got, uh, little boys, and we play along that road, and it's, it's very special to us. So please don't, you know, if, if, um, if there's any way that you can reconsider and have other options, you know, we all would really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Nguyen.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amanda Richard.
So, I just got home at 6:30 from taking my kids for soccer practice, and I come home to the mail to find this today, the day of the meeting. First off, whoever was in charge of this is absolutely unacceptable to get this information the night of the meeting, not allowing us any time as residents to go over this book of crap of rezoning. This is not enough time. I see that May 11th at 5:30 is the second meeting in which you make your decisions, not allowing the residents enough time to explore these options. I have no idea what these options are, and I'm gonna go ahead and tell you right now, I know that one of them is Tropical Plaza. I'd like to know how that's gonna impact the school. First and foremost, my children, who are special needs, were at Serrano, and I had to take them out because it was 32 to 1. How are you gonna accommodate the additional families with their childrens? Keep in mind, this has nothing to do about whoever's moving into these homes, it's, what it's about, to me, are the children that are at these schools suffering already. This is complete crap, have some goddamn backbone and stand up.
Uh, Mrs. Richard, the meeting, the meeting this evening is not on the housing element?
Thank you. The next speaker is Mark Kuli.
Counsel, thank you very much for seeing all of us and hearing all of us. I know that it's not a vote for you, but I've been very active in this because I feel like when this was added, this was just spaces. I don't think the people who thought this over thought these as residents and neighbors, and I'm very happy to have spent my time on a website and walked the neighborhood and helped bring to you their stories, right? And again, we'll be back here on May 11th as well. I, I do feel like, um, when this got put up there, there wasn't really the thought that this was neighborhoods. There wasn't really thought that this is where I taught my son to ride his bike. There wasn't really thought like, this is my retirement. That kinda thing, I don't think was thinking so clearly, otherwise I don't think we'd be so singled out. So, I'm really grateful to all that have come, I'm grateful the time that you've given us over here. I think that you'll see that we're thoughtful, the website is done thoughtfully, so that we are trying to handle this. I think this is how neighbors will disagree, but also show how, support, but in the right way. Um, so I'm just gonna say a thank you, and, um, we'll be in touch. I'm hoping that you'll see that, um, what we brought. Again, my website got, uh, 60 people to sign on today alone, it just got launched yesterday. I think we'll have several hundred, um, pretty soon, okay? Again, thank you all, Mayor Miles, everyone else, thank you so much.
Mr. Kuli, thank you.
Thank you. The last blue slip I have is for Eric Reynolds.
Hello, everybody. Hello, council. Um, uh, I guess they saved me for last, but the, the big thing for this is that, um, everybody came out, they, they had great things to say, uh, and I just wanted to make sure that the council knows that we need to figure it out. Um, I've lived here for 20 years, I know a lot of you guys have, you know, ties to the area, and we do have to find the, the solution for everything, for everyone. So, um, I'm gonna make it short, I know you guys are tired, I know you got a long night, and we all appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds, thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments on, uh, this off-agenda item at this time?
Yes, we received a written letter from Mary Beth Felsen, uh, on Featherhill Drive. Uh, she was not able to attend the meeting, so she asked that this be read, and it's very brief, so I'll go ahead and read it. This is feedback on the April 11th Special City Council Meeting. First, the April 11th Special City Council Meeting was a good introduction to the affordable housing mandate. Please consider the following feedback. First, the council asks for resident input. It's frustrating to provide that input when information provided is so incomplete. For example, the rezoned Tropical Plaza option, there is a picture of Tropical Plaza Business and Serrano Elementary, but what area of the parcel you're planning to rezone, lines drawn around the proposed rezone area would be helpful. For the rezoned minimum lot size, uh, for other developed lots, we need to location lots in the proposed plan. It'd be helpful if a more detailed description of the options is available in early May. Second, Serrano, Dotson, Featherhill have four schools less than a quarter mile away, Serrano Elementary, Saravilla Middle School, Villa Park High School, and Lutheran High School. Rezoning the Tropic Plaza parcel at the corner of Santiago and Serrano, adjacent to Serrano Elementary School for high-density housing with no parking included, is a recipe for additional chaos on Serrano Avenue. Where the, where, where will the residents of Tropical Plaza Park, Park on Serrano Avenue? Where will parents of, uh, students at Serrano Elementary and Saravilla Middle School park when they drop off and pick up their children? The parking spaces near their school will all be occupied. This is, uh, concentrating too much in one small area. There are better options. The abandoned gravel pit on Villa Park Road and the rezoning of Town Center are much better options to pursue. Mary Beth Felsen.
Thank you. And we were starting a list of all the emails. Do you have just a, a brief number of...
Yeah, we have 32, uh, emails that I've received, we're recording those with email contacts that we will, uh, be providing to the council as received, but we're receiving, basically, on the hour, we're receiving more, so every time I, I update it and start to print it out, I get two or three more. So, uh, we will be keeping those for the record, and I'll make sure that those are available to all of the council members.
Thank you. I have a question. Um, as it pertains to, uh, Mrs. Richards, who came and was under the impression that the, uh, housing element meeting is this evening, am I allowed to comment on the past three public hearing meetings that we have had, as far as just giving the dates and making sure that the people watching understand that this is not the first meeting nor the first time?
Oh, absolutely. And if you wish, I can give a brief synopsis, just so everybody understands the process of the legalities we're dealing with, at your discretion.
Uh, sure, I, I'll, I'll go first, and then, how about you? So I would like to state for the record that, um, we have had three other public meetings regarding this topic this evening, um, and I actually responded to a resident with the dates, so I found my email. December 15th, 2020, under New Business, it was item number 10. March 9th, 2021, it was item number 2. It was the first special, uh, special council meeting. And then April 13th, it was the second Special City Council Meeting, item number 1 under New Business. So, for those watching, I just wanna make sure everyone understands, this is not a meeting where we are voting or talking or discussing about the, the, um, housing element or proposals or plans thereof, and the, and the public comment that was provided this evening is on the, um, is, is able to happen because it's not an agenda item. May 11th will be another public hearing where we will have more input and be able to have a dialogue and discussion as it pertains to every single, um, proposal that has, um, been listed, along with that mailer was, uh, done at the recommendation of council and staff, because the past meetings, we had nobody present, so, um, we...
You didn't tell us you were doing this. You have to go to a seller, a website that nobody looks at. Come on, it's like, check this guide in here. You're gonna tear down Arthur's house because you didn't check the seller.
Guys, guys, hey, mayor has the floor, relax, we'll get to everybody.
So, the meetings are agendized and on the website for the public to be able to log in and see, um, at which point, they are also televised, and also you can see them, um, again, either on, um, the website underneath the agendized meetings, uh, and also on YouTube. So, um, I can't comment much more on that, we can talk about it, um, at the May 11th, so I can counter some of what you're saying, but I don't wanna break any Brown Act. And then, Councilman Colacott, I'm gonna let the city attorney go first.
Okay. So, so just, so everybody understands, so tonight, we're not actually talking about something called the housing element, which is the, the action we would take to designate certain areas for, uh, additional housing. All of this is a function of... All of this is a function of state law. The state, in its infinite wisdom, depending upon your perspective, has mandated that throughout California, local governmental entities, i.e. the cities, provide areas where more housing can be built to deal with California's housing crisis. And how that comes about is there is a state agency up in Sac Town called HCD, Department of Housing and Community Development. They come up with a number of housing units that they think need to be built in the state. That gets shipped down to something called SCAG, which is Southern California Association of Governments. And they allocate that number to each city within Southern California and they tell that city, this is how many housing units you have to allow for in your housing element to be built. So, if you hear the word RENA, Regional Housing Needs Assessment, that's the number of housing units each city has to build. And I forget, what's our number, Steve? I forget.
296.
Okay, 296. So, the city is attempting to comply with the law because we have to comply with the law and to figure out where those housing units are going to go. And as the mayor was saying, we've had multiple public meetings on that. We're going to have more, to which you all should come to, right? To provide additional input on that specific fact. Now, somebody had mentioned, well, you know, fight, sue, this or that. Cities have tried, that costs a lot of money, first of all. Also, cities have tried, famously, the city of Irvine tried a number of years ago and the court said, you can't. So, you know, people can say things, it's easier said than done. So, that's the process. I just want to make sure everybody knew that process and why we're here and what we're talking about. Cool? Cool.
Thank you. Councilman Colacott, did you have a?
Yes. Of the residents that are here tonight, how many of you knew about these previous meetings that we've had on this?
I just neither.
Okay, so you had one. And?
Two.
Or two. And a question for our city attorney. It was brought up that there's lots of land outside of the city limits of Villa Park. Do we have to solve or provide these units within the city limits of Villa Park or can we go outside of the city limits?
If you get the consent of outside jurisdictions, potentially swap some units with other jurisdictions, there's arguments that you can do that. But I've, hey, I have the floor. Is in a barn. I was raised in a barn, I know a barn. But I've never seen that happen. So, generally, no. They have to be in Villa Park.
So, you know, the county has an unincorporated number as well?
Yeah.
So, it is not as if the county has unincorporated land that they don't have to. They have a same target number. The number for Southern California regional area is 1.3 million affordable units. The number for the state of all jurisdictions is 5 million units spread. So, Southern California has 1.3, our number is 296. If you were to go around proportionately, each city has a number that they believe is just as unreasonable as we would believe our number to be, and the county will attest to the same thing. Some cities have much more unincorporated area, I mean, undeveloped area, which makes it an easier process. We don't because we're over 99% think. In response to you, councilmen, I've been involved in this for a lot of years. And to my knowledge, unless you are able to negotiate a credit with another city, and that usually involves a significant payment of sort, they won't do it. So, for instance, the county, when I was with the county, we were trying to negotiate something with Irvine regarding the base, and Irvine said, no, if you're building in our city, we're getting the credit, and absolutely not. So, that's sort of the issue there. Even though the county owned the money there, owned the land there, because it was within the city of Irvine, Irvine wanted credit for the housing, so they were going to fight the county in court for it.
The whole Marine Corps base, that's a...
So, there's a lot of, I mean, so the whole thing is very difficult because each city is stuck with their same onerous, what they would believe is onerous. I just know, I was talking to city manager of Fullerton, they have 12,000 units they have to put in Fullerton. So, if you think about Fullerton having 12,000 units somehow, where do they put that? They don't know any more than we do. But that's sort of the dilemma. I would also just close by saying the packet was sent out. We sent it out last Friday. If anyone needs extra copies of it, we have hard copies, we can email you copies, there are copies on our website, and we'll make sure that we get you whatever you need to make sure you want it. And we can answer questions as well.
Councilman?
This is wonderful that all of you came out tonight to share your opinions and your thoughts and concerns and so forth. I mean, this is exactly what this is all about. The thing I want to bring up is, we recognize, a couple of weeks ago, when we had the prior meeting, that no one was here and that we did need to do a better job of communicating this. And that's part of the reason that a lot of you got those flyers in your home email, I mean, in your home mail in the last few days. So, we have time. It's not like we sent it out in hopes that we would cover something up for tonight because tonight is not about this at all. It's two or three weeks down the road and then it's a month down the, you know, two months down the road and three months down the road. So, there's ample time for all of us to come together as a community and look at the different options and work together to try to come up with the best solution possible without taking away from our beautiful community. Because I can tell you, the five of us don't want anything to happen in this community at all. But we're forced to do something that we don't like to do. And we need your help to figure this out together. It's not our decision, it's our decision, okay? But we did try, you know, Steve's been kind enough to go out to our civic organizations. He went out last week to Rotary and talked about this. So, we're talking about it in the community with civic organizations, we're sending out mailings, and we're trying to increase the amount of outreach that we're doing so everybody knows. So, I do appreciate you coming tonight.
Lastly, if I could just reiterate, the final decision or final vote will not be until September. It is now April. So, we have time, like Councilman Pitt said. So, what we have to do is, we have to move forward and continue to get input from the state. We can't wait until September to say, here's our plan, and they say, no good. The implications of noncompliance are pretty onerous and difficult for the city. So, we need to sort of be moving on it. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. And one last comment on the timing. What people I don't think understand or realize is that when we very first started discussing this and some of the ideas, we presented it to the state back in December and we had to wait for their response. So, there was nothing we could tell you guys anyways. We all had to wait to see what HCD was going to come back with when we asked them what our parameters were. So, I echo Councilman Pitt's sentiment and some of the emails that I've replied back, we will get through this together and we will figure this out and we will come up with a plan. And nobody is happy. And our goal as the council here is to make sure that we can satisfy our requirement so that we aren't penalized by the state, but also recognizing that we are very aware and cognizant of how impactful some of these propositions or ideas are. So, if anyone felt like we were trying to sneak this by, which is kind of some of the emails I received as well, that was not the intent. And I think we can get into that more later on May 11th. And I hope that everyone does come and participate on May 11th and we work together as a team. So, I do appreciate everyone coming. I appreciate the work that some of the residents have put into and making sure that their community is aware of what's going on. And, you know, we will get through this. So, with that, I'm going to close the public comment and we're going to move on with our council meeting. So, you're welcome to stay, but I understand if you don't.
We're going to talk about horse manure next. If you want to stay. No?
Have a good evening and thank you. We're going to take a five-minute break. Page 7. We have some proclamations that I'll go through quickly. The DMV Donate Life California Month. Please join the city in recognizing DMV Donate Life Month in April. Important message of organ, eye, and tissue donation during Donate Life Month and beyond. While the decision to register is a personal one, we encourage all Californians to check yes online at donatelifeCalifornia.org or when renewing your driver's licenses, ID cards to the DMV. Also, this month is Earthquake Preparedness Month. And Earthquake Warning California is the country's first publicly available statewide warning system that could give California residents crucial seconds to take cover before you feel shaking. Managed by the Governor's Office of Emergency, Earthquake Warning California uses ground motion sensors from across the state to detect earthquakes before humans can feel them and notify Californians to drop cover and hold on. The city Villa Park joins communities across the state to encourage residents to learn more about Earthquake Warning California by downloading the My Shake app or visiting earthquake.ca.gov. And this unfortunately hits home because this past weekend, but April is Drowning Prevention Awareness Month. Drowning is the leading cause of death in kids under 5 in Orange County. Three children die every day as a result of drowning. Our goal is to help families become more aware of prevention measures so we can stop losing any more lives to drowning. This year, the city Villa Park is proud to declare May through October as Drowning Prevention Awareness Months and participate in the Water Safety Campaign, quote, "Always watch your child around water," or as Chief Hunter said, "Keep them within an arm's length," which gives in-depth information on what Orange County residents can do to prevent drowning. Please visit ocfa.org to learn more. And then lastly, April is, May, sorry, is Older Americans Month. And since our community is filled with probably about 25% older residents since, pardon? More than 25? Since 1963, the month of May has been designated as Older Americans Month. Communities of strength is the 2021 theme that certainly describes our Orange County cities. The Orange County Senior Citizens Advisory Council is charged with the responsibility of advising the Orange County Board of Supervisors and Office on Aging on matters affecting the senior citizens in Orange County. The 40-member council is comprised of volunteer citizens, local elected officials, representatives of healthcare and supportive services provider organizations, persons with leadership experience, and the general public. The city Villa Park is honored to proclaim May 2021 as Older Americans Month, and I'm actually the representative on that. Not kind. That was my report tonight, too. So, all right, moving on, we now move into our agendized public meeting hearings. And our first hearing is to review to waive reading in full all ordinances of resolutions on the agenda. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you, mayor. This is item number one, is the, just a regular monthly item that we have, allows us to conduct city council meetings in an expeditious and efficient manner. We'd recommend approval.
So moved. Second?
Is there a roll call?
Yeah, there's a roll call. We still have to because we're sitting, we don't have access to the system.
No, I'm saying, would you please call roll?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rossini?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman?
Yes.
I'm having a hard time with this thing. Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Five zero, passes.
All right. Item number two on public hearings, consideration of ordinance 2021-622 to establish a comprehensive set of regulations and standards for animal waste regulations in all areas of the city. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you, mayor. I'm going to add something, I'll add and then I'll let the city attorney add something here. This is basically, as you know, Villa Park does have homes. We have horses, llamas, chickens, dog and cat breeders, and various other animal species. However, we do not have established guidelines or even codes relative to the proper management care of disposal of animal waste. This is something that recently came up with regards to one of our residents. So, we worked with the county and other jurisdictions as well. And we, in order to enforce and make sure we have sanitary and clean conditions, the city of Villa Park itself needs to adopt the specific regulations. So, we have drafted those in consultations with the county health department to ensure that we have appropriate handling, maintenance, temporary storage, and collection disposal of animal waste. I'll let the city attorney.
It came to our attention after we did it that we probably should have been more specific on certain animals. So, Steve, did you hand around the red line? Did you guys all get this? So, just in section 7-2.2 definition?
Thank you.
Even though it's included because we list any multicelled living creature other than plants and humans, we specifically identified horses, llamas, cows, goats, cats, dogs, fishes, file reptiles, and rabbits as within that definition to make sure everybody is covered. So...
You don't have amphibians.
They are a multi, now you as a biologist?
Those would be considered exotics and exotics are handled differently.
Yes, but they're also multicelled, so they would be covered if we had an amphibian defecation problem.
Just thought I'd throw that in there.
Anyway, so we're, recommend approval.
Okay, is there any comments or discussion from council?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just a question. What was the genesis for this being put before council?
We had an issue with our code enforcement officer went out to address an issue with a resident who had received a complaint about another, one resident complained about another resident, collection of material, of fecal material on the side of the yard. And we went out to enforce it and realized we didn't have any, he didn't have a code enforcement to address the site. So, we came back and we checked with Todd and we checked with all of our, we went through all the things, we don't have anything. So, beyond common sense, we didn't have anything. So, we talked to the other jurisdictions and they said, you need to have it. We've been deferential to the county's codes on animal care in a lot of instances. And in fact, we by reference adopt the city, the county's ordinances. They don't have anything specific as well. So, this is a problem peculiar and we needed to deal with it. So, the code enforcement officer came to me and said, Steve, can we please adopt something so I can have something to enforce relative to the city?
And we modeled this one on one I did in Yorba Linda where we have a lot of horses and horse trails. That's where it comes from primarily.
Thank you.
And the incident was February when the resident complained?
Yes.
Because I remember where I was at the time. Okay, so, no further comments, discussion? No? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
We need a public comment at all?
No.
There's nobody. You're right. Is there any public comment?
No.
Do I have a motion?
Yes. I'll follow the staff recommendation.
Second.
Can you please call it?
Amendments to the animals designated? Yes, thank you.
So accepted on the second.
Can you please call roll?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rossini?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Moving on to consent calendar, now we will consider our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council staff or public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council, is there, are there any items from items number three through eight anyone would like removed? like removed from the consent calendar?
Item five, unless I'm mistaken, I was absent from that meeting. And I should abstain from that, so I don't know if that needs to be specifically removed from that, but certainly noted that I should abstain.
It'll just be noted in the minutes that you'll be abstaining on five.
Thank you.
Just by extension, I should abstain from item four.
As noted.
Okay. But that's not removing, it's just they're going in.
We can vote and the minutes will reflect.
Okay, so, then we can go ahead and call the roll?
If you have, I don't think you have a motion yet.
I'll also, I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Will you call the roll?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rossini?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Okay, new business. Item number nine, our first item of new business is the approval of the 2021-22 OC Animal Care Notice of Intent. Can you please give the staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. This item involves the annual notice of intent that we're required by our agreement, contract agreement to commit to the County of Orange to provide our animal care. As we just referenced, they do the enforcement of our activities out there. Basically, they provide us field services and shelter services and veterinary services, countywide veterinary services that we, we are charged per uses basis. And this, this notice of intent basically gives an estimated dollar amount for the fiscal year. What the estimate for this coming year is $27,762, as I mentioned a few weeks ago in our budget, which is about $4,400 over our estimate for 2021. So, this estimate is based on our usage. One of the things that I have followed up on and spent a lot of time with the county going over their records, we, the increase is attributed almost exclusively to the number of wildlife calls that they were calling in. So, our residents are not having lost dogs or stray dogs or whatever. We've got coyote calls or rattlesnake calls or whatever they might be calling animal care for. That number has gone up tremendously. That may be a result of the warm weather or whatever, but, or the fires bringing the animals more in the area. But we're having a larger number and it's exclusively that. We have, our shelter days are not going up, our licenses are great, we have very good license compliance with the city. So, it is strictly a matter of our residents when concerned, call Orange County Animal Care and ask to deal with the wildlife. And so, that's why the number is going up from last year. The overall county budget number is staying flat. So, that's one of the things that I checked on is they're not increasing their own budget. They're, they're making some reductions and doing some systematic things. So, this is purely based on how the pie is split among our county users and simply because we're calling more, we're getting charged more. So, we're getting very good service. I have heard no complaints about animal care. They're very responsive. You see their white pickup trucks here all the time, and I usually hear about a 15-minute response time, which is very good. That's particularly good when somebody spots a rattlesnake or something along those lines or an aggressive animal, wildlife animal in their yard. So, we would recommend approval. This would allow us to go ahead and execute the agreement for fiscal year 2122.
Thank you. Staff, do you have any comments? Nope. Was there any public comment on this or anybody write in?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And take the roll?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rossini?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Okay, now we'll move on to the city manager report. Steve?
Thank you. The only item that, well, we have the regular monthly item. We've spent, as you well know, we've spent a lot of time on the housing element and the budget. I would just simply report that for the record and for those watching, next Monday night at 5:00, we'll have our second budget hearing. It will be streamed, it will be live, and the same thing will allow residents to come in and speak. But also, I wanted to announce that pursuant to section 23 dash two, 20 dash two point two, I have a city authority to approve request adjustments up to 25% for the rear and side yard setback. So, the, the address of 18172 Wind Circle is decreasing the minimum year, rear yard back, setback because of a number of reasons. From 25 feet to 20 feet, seven inches, a deviation of four feet, five inches or 18% or less, slightly less than 18%. And so, we've gone ahead and improved that. I just, for the record, we have to state that, that it's documented. So, that's the only thing I have. I'm able to answer any questions about any projects.
Yes.
How are we doing on Knowles?
How are we doing on Knowles Park? Oh, I'm sorry. We are meeting on Friday to get a conceptual plan back from the design group, which recall we have to do the design because of the state to get the state money. So, we have to submit from a licensed architect has to, landscape architect has to submit something. So, on Friday, we're going over that plan and hopefully we'll be moving forward. Our goal is to get work started in May and to have it done sometime this summer.
Cool, thank you.
Anybody else? Nope. All right, we're gonna move on to council member meeting attendance reports, and Orange County Vector Control goes first, and we'll go fast. So, one thing I want to report is that the last meeting I had mentioned that Orange County Municipal Vector Control was looking at purchasing a building in Santa Ana off of Dyer Road, and I had voted in opposition to that, and I am, I am personally happy to say that Orange County Vector Control decided not to follow through with that decision. So, they are back at square one. I'm the chair for the Budget and Finance Committee, and we reviewed, reviewed the proposed district budget for the fiscal year 2021, 2022, and 2223. And basically, we had a summarization of the district's proposed fund balance and broad breakdown of all the revenue and expenses within the general fund, and that was in preparation for a budget session that is going to be held on May 5th. And then for the regular city council meeting, they talked about the assessments. So, there's assessment district number one and assessment district number two, and as of right now, there will be no increase. There is no planned increase for those. We have $1.92 per housing unit for benefit assessment number one and $7.70 for benefit assessment number two. And that is it for the Orange County Municipal Vector Control. And now we'll move on to sanitation district.
So, I have attended five separate meetings since the last time I reported on Orange County Sanitation, board meetings, operations, strategic planning. Wanted to report in a broad sense about the strategic planning for the Orange County sanitation is a fascinating process, and they are really laid out in terms of how to keep Orange County sanitation going in the most efficient and forward-thinking way that they can maintain. The maintenance of Orange County sewage lines is all fascinating. They've gone through some presentations on exactly how they clean out each line, and it's intriguing. It is, there are a number of videos. If anybody is interested in following up or finding out more about it, I can certainly share some more information with you directly if you contact me. The biggest proposal that was put forward in the operations committee was the $222 million project to rehab the headworks, which will take place over the next several years. But that proposal has been before, put forward and is up for approval tomorrow.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, fire authority.
I'm actually going to punt on this one. Next month, I'd like to have an update. There are two agenda items from the meeting on April 22nd that I attended via Zoom that I'd like to follow up on, including some of the current events that we just recently had this weekend in Villa Park. And I also attended a capital improvement program meeting. I asked for some additional information from staff on both those. I'd like to bring that forth next month if that's okay with everybody. If you have any specific questions about the agenda or about the fire authority, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions at this time.
I don't, I don't see any. Orange County Library Advisory?
No meeting.
City Schools Advisory?
Also no meeting.
Law Enforcement Advisory?
No meeting.
Villa Park Community Services Foundation. So, I stood in for Councilman Pitts, and at the time, they were talking about Earth Day, which just happened this past Saturday, April 24th, Cleanup Day. I'm interested to hear how that, it looked like they had a good response, so tomorrow's your meeting, right? Yeah, so hopefully you can provide a report, but it looked like that was attended well and bright. And then there was discussion about the Fourth of July Parade. Right now, plans are on for that, and Gretchen Ferris is the one that is coordinating it. So, of course, we could change anything at a moment's notice, but we're hoping, there might be some modifications, but hopefully everyone will be donning their red, white, and blue and participate in that. And they were discussing some other options, perhaps a potential drive-in movie in August for like some summer movie nights. And then a little bit of discussion on the Villa Park Knowles, which I think Steve already gave that update.
Cool.
And Steve, thank you for attending for me.
Oh, you're welcome.
Sorry, I just realized, so we didn't have a city schools meeting this past month, but I didn't report on the one previous month. So, if I could get a quick update on that?
Sure.
So, we did talk about the delays that have impacted the construction over at Villa Park High School. There are actually a number of videos that some of the Orange County, sorry, the OUSD representatives have made. One by Kathy Moffett, another by Chris Erickson, where they'd go through and they, they walk through the facility and they talk about some of the problems they've had with, I want to say it's the steel certification, and why the subcontractor they used ran into some issues and they had to replace, and how they've tried to take what was a delay and get everything back on track. Obviously, still staying within budget and time being the, the miss there. I know we've all walked by and seen or driven by and seen that that project has been delayed and slow. They are hoping that they will be able to get that back on track to be completed by the end of, I want to, gosh, I'll, I'll come back with the final date on that. I, I'm not calling it to mind right now, so I'll get the completion date for that.
Yep, okay. Housing Legislative Committee, we've had no meeting specifically because this is regarding the housing element and it needs to be a full council communication. Did you have a comment?
Yes, related to the housing committee, I attended the ECCOC Housing Committee meeting this month. I typically attend it every month. And this month, we had a presentation by one of the executive managers of the California Department of Housing and Community Development, lady by the name of, I believe it's Megan Kirby. She announced that there's an ADU update memo out, accessory dwelling unit update memo out, and if we could get a copy of that. She didn't elaborate, but it sounded like it was, had some good information for municipalities. She noted, did note that there's lots of interest in accessory dwelling units statewide. She also announced that there are more pro-housing regulations coming out. So, we think we've had a lot of fun with this, with our current update. There's, they're ginning up some more regulations. But she also pointed out that there, there should be incentive grant funds coming to help promote development of affordable housing, so.
Thank you.
Things to come.
Okay, Bridges at Kramer Place Advisory, we met on Wednesday, March 24th. And basically, Mercy House Executive Director Larry Haynes presented an update on the current shelter data, and that is 227 exits, 138 known exits, 89 unknown exits. And I think what I've mentioned in the past, the difference between a known exit and an unknown exit is people have the ability to just leave and not come back, and they don't know where they went, and that's an unknown. And when it's a known exit, they've actually achieved placing them in either a temporary housing or long-term housing, or they've reunited with, you know, estranged family member or something. So, of the unknown exits, 25 returned back to the system. So, they exited, but then at a later date, they came back. And then 64, they did not return and they have no idea where they are. Larry Haynes did, did want everyone to understand that. So, they, so these homeless advocacy shelters and groups are measured on a, on a basis of how many placements they have and how many exits they have or prevent. And he's finding or realizing that this is a systems issue and not a single provider issue. So, he feels there needs to be some work on that because it may be that the whole system is debunked, but yet the blame is kind of being put on these individual locations. And then, lastly, there was, and still is, an active investigation, litigation on some claims of impropriety. We don't know much about it, other than the committee had then asked and requested for documentation on grievances going forward because we never knew if there were actually grievances and what the grievances were. And so, we were provided a report that at this time, between July 1st of 2020 and June 30th of 2021, there were no grievances reported. So, they were just reporting on what we had asked them to do. That was, any questions on that? Okay. And then, the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, what we did for the proclamation for the month of May is the Senior Citizens Month, and that was part of the SCAC, Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. I'm also part of the Health and Nutrition. However, I was unable to attend the Health and Nutrition Committee, which took place just on Wednesday. So, before we conclude, I want to also bring up, we have not discussed city managers' pay. We kind of tabled it, so I don't know if we need to ask for a special session, or is it something we can agendize for May's meeting, but we kind of left it saying?
We did, that's my bad, actually. So, I think I have direction and an understanding, so we will agendize at the next meeting for approval.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay. Do you have a question? Okay. All right, now it's time to hear individual council information items, starting with Councilmember Pitts.
I don't have a whole lot to report, other than I think I was like a lot of you, fielding a lot of questions, a lot of emails, a lot of inquiries, a lot of conversation about the housing element. And, you know, once again, I just want to reiterate, I'm so glad that this community is involved and are providing their input to us to all help work together to shape whatever decision we are going to make about this. So, I've had some lengthy conversations with people, both in person and on the phone, and I really do appreciate the dedication that people have in this community to make something good happen from a bad thing. So, I really do appreciate that. But I know we all, if you're spending as much time as I am, you're doing a lot. So, I appreciate your time, too, for doing that. And Steve, thank you for, you know, your, your going around and talking to the various groups. I attended, you know, Chad and I both attended a Rotary meeting last week where you, you really talked through this whole process and helped people understand. So, that's just another community outreach, so I appreciate you doing that. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Colacott?
Nothing to report.
Councilman Rossini?
I would just like to thank everybody that sent emails to us and to me directly. If I haven't specifically responded to you, it's because of the timing of those emails, but I intend to get a specific response to you. Please understand that each and every one of those specifically sent emails to me have been forwarded to our city manager, so they are part of the public record. I've had folks call me, I've had folks get ahold of me, literally flag me down on the way to the meeting here, and I appreciate the community sentiment about this matter. Just keep in mind that we are being forced to do this. We do have to comply by law, and if you want change to occur, you need to think about who you elect in 2022 and 2024 because Sacramento is dictating to, to do this. It's not the other way around. So, we're trying, as Councilman Pitts pointed out, to do the best we can with an unfortunate situation. We have a city that's built out 99%, perhaps a touch more, and we're trying to be very sensitive to everybody's concerns within the community and yet comply with the law. So, thank you. So, thank you. I appreciate everybody's time on this, and in particular, Steve and, and staff on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman?
Thank you. Yeah, I also want to just take a moment to say thank you again to Steve. I know the last minuteness of the outreach to Rotary, it really meant a lot to the people. I heard from several other people that really liked, that you reached out. I believe there were, did you also attend meetings with other groups? Yeah, with the Women's League maybe, or?
Coffee clutch group over here in the mornings with our group.
I can't say how much that means to our city to have a city manager that involved and willing to reach out and, and get with the groups and, and help us as city council members to explain situations and to talk to our residents about what's going on and what we're working through. So, just a very heartfelt thank you. And also to, want to echo, I think this city council is not one that is trying to get away with anything. We really are interested in as much community involvement as we can get. I know we've expressed it at past meetings, and maybe people aren't listening to the meetings, but if you can go back and listen, we're, we're really interested in getting additional feedback, new ideas, anything that you can provide to, to participate in this with us. This is not us against you, it's us all together, so, thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, one of the things I want to say is, we actually are way ahead of the game in some of our fellow cities in Orange County. I have some friendships that I've made through the weekly mayor's meetings, which have been made bi-monthly now, that's why you guys aren't getting a report as, as frequently. And in discussing, some of the cities have not even held their first public meeting, so I'm not going to call anyone out under the bus, but for our residents that are listening, we are very fortunate that we do have a council and a city staff that are very cognizant of timing and timelines and giving everyone enough time, even though it may feel like we're, we're putting this on everyone at last minute, we really are not, and I believe that we are good stewards of what we have been tasked to do by coercion. But I want to say thank you to everyone. I know everyone's fielding phone calls and emails, and, and one thing I will say for the residents, if they're still listening, we directed council members to provide input to city staff. So, some of the ideas that have made it out and made their way, in all fairness, we did ask that city council provide some ideas to city staff. So, the creation of some of the ideas were not because people feel that certain areas are less than other areas, it's purely because we asked and gave direction to come up with some, some ideas and proposals, and that's really all it was. So, I want to thank city staff, and I know we all are going to be fielding a lot more, and again, I agree, having the participation by the residents is, is important, and this is something that we will, as a city, work through and, and will be better for it, hopefully. So, with that, I'd like to conclude the meeting, and I hope everyone has a good night. Done.